All right, we'll go ahead and call the call meeting for May 2, 2017, to order. Again, this is the second of a series of called meetings, the sole purpose of which is to have workshop and discuss the budget for fiscal year 18, 2000, that starts in, excuse me, July 1, 2017, runs to June 30 of 2018. As I mentioned last night, this is a workshop for the council and to, for us to ask questions of department heads as well as constitutional officers. And while the public is more than, we're glad that the public did come out, this is a very important meeting. We appreciate those that watch online either now or later. You will have an opportunity to comment at May 23 at the public hearing that's scheduled for then, as well as if you may make comments next during the regular council meeting, items non-related to the agenda, if you so choose. Okay, with that said, we're going to talk about revenues tonight, that's what we discussed. And...
Yes, you know, yes, after your last discussion last night, I got with the commissioner today to talk about the revenue shortfalls. You'll also remember that during the budget, I told you we had left the real property tax value level because we were waiting for some information. They had provided an initial number that was higher, and I had some questions about that number. And so the commissioner also has some more information about that. And so we worked together to put together this PowerPoint to talk through some of that. And so with that, Terry, if you want to come up and we'll work our way through it.
Let's talk about shortfall first.
All right.
Let's get to the meat of the thing instead of the pub.
If you want to hand me the controller, I'll be happy to skip to that slide.
Okay, let me first say that this was an unusual general reassessment for us. This is my fourth as commissioner. This is the first time we've used a firm other than Blue Ridge Mass Appraisal for the assessment work. This is also the first time we've used a new administration system called ProVal to administer the general reassessment. As a result, general reassessment process began later in the year than it normally would have. However, we finished earlier, when I say we, I'm talking about Wamperen's, they finished earlier than we've ever finished in a general reassessment. They were finished early December with all of their general reassessment work. And at that time, the total real estate taxes for the city, as indicated by the slide there, is $13,580,465, which was an increase of a little over half million dollars over the 2016 total real estate values for the city. That would result in a 4% increase, which was about what we were expecting, he told us to expect about a 6%, came out to about 4. After the general reassessment, it is required by law that there be two parts of the appeals process. The first part involves an appeal to the, sometimes it's called the Board of Assessors. These are actually employees of Wamperen's who hear appeals from citizens who aren't satisfied with their appraisal for one reason or the other. And it started, that started, I believe, around January 15, which is the earliest we've ever started the Board of Assessor Appeals. It also went on longer than any Board of Assessor Appeals we ever had because we had, I think, two to three times as many appeals before the Board of Assessors as we normally When they finished their work, there was another phase of the general reassessment appeals process, and that was Judge Johnson appointed three individuals in the city, one who's a licensed appraiser, well-known by everyone in this room, I'm sure David Leonard, who was a real estate agent, Linda Pruner, and there was a fellow that worked at VDOT, and one of his jobs was real estate acquisition, Buddy Reedy. And these three individuals had more than three, almost four times as many appeals as we've ever had before the Board of Equalization. Now, the way it works, the Board of Equalization, at least that's the way the board chose to do it, and I believe it's the way it's worked as well as I can recall every time I've been commissioner, they hear the cases, and the last case they heard was on April 12, and then they start meeting, going over their notes, discussing it, you know, they looked at the property, and then they make their decision and send their letters to taxpayers. They have not even gotten, I don't believe, all the letters out to taxpayers yet from all the appeals that they heard. But the last letters, I believe, went out last week sometime, it would have been, it was between Wednesday and Friday of last week. So as a result, we were only able to give the city manager preliminary totals on the general reassessment based upon where we stood before any of the appeals took place. We have gotten together this week, calculated the impact of the appeals, and if you could go to the next slide, I'll give you, I'm going to give you an example of some of the things, some of the larger ones. There were a lot of small ones, a whole lot of small ones, but I'm just going to show you a couple of the big ones that resulted in us having a net significant reduction in what we thought we were going to have. Bristol Mall was assessed last year at almost $17 million. This year, it's assessed at 1.9. That's about a $15 million loss, right there. And the reason for that was because, I don't guess it's news to anybody, but the Bristol Mall is virtually a ghost town. They've lost all their anchors, and it's been ages since I've been out there, but there's only a handful of businesses. So the Wamperen's determined that they would have to use an income approach to assess the Bristol Mall, and that's why there's such a significant decrease in that particular property. If you could go to the next slide. We had the Sprint, former Sprint Center that moved to Tennessee, which was acquired during the year by Highlands Fellowship Church last year, but after January 1. And so last year, it's assessed at over $3 million. This year, it's tax exempt because it's a church. Next slide is Lowe's, and this involves some explanation. The land values, I was informed by the Department of Planning, that the land values for all of the Falls property should be valued at half million dollars an acre. And my 2016 assessment of those properties was based upon the base of half million dollars an acre. I was told by city attorney that that was in the contract for Cabela's, and we based the land values on that presumption. When the Wamperen's appraised that property, they used that same presumption. In the initial phase of the appeals with the Board of Assessors, a firm was hired by Lowe's who submitted a very extensive appraisal by an independent appraiser, one of the most thorough ones I've ever seen, that talks about the comparables and all the factors that indicate that the property was over-assessed. The Board of Assessors would not budge on the land value, but they did actually take the building value down for Lowe's. I don't have it in front of me, now, I can't remember exactly what it was, but they reduced it fairly substantially. Lowe's then appealed a second time to the Board of Equalization, and one of the things they raised, they wanted a copy of the contract between the city and Lowe's, and I had asked, as a result of that, I asked for a copy of the Lowe's contract and the Cabela's contract, which I had never seen before. I wasn't part of the negotiations, was never given a copy, never by email or any other means. When I looked over the Lowe's contract, I realized there was no clause in there that set what the value of the real estate was. But what I was surprised to find out is that there was nothing in the Cabela's contract either that set out the value of the real estate. And what I'm talking about is, what I was informed by former counsel, former city council, the clause in Cabela's said something to the effect, and I'm paraphrasing it, that because of the economic incentives provided to the city, by the city, to Cabela's, for a period of four years thereafter, the value of the assessed value of the real estate, which Cabela's was setting on, would be, by agreement of the parties, $500,000 per acre. When I got the Cabela's contract and actually looked at it, and the same thing is true of David Leonard, who is the chair of the Board of Equalization, we realized that there was no such clause in that Cabela's contract either. There being no such clause in that contract, the Board of Equalization on both the Cabela's and Lowe's property used the market approach to determine the value of the land, which is what they should have done and what they normally do with all property, unless you've got a specific contract to the contrary. They used the market approach, and that cut out, the biggest majority of what you see here in the decrease in Lowe's is land, and if you go to the next slide, I think it should be Cabela's. The 4 million, 4-plus million on Lowe's and the 2-plus million on all of Cabela's is land. That $2 million decrease is a decrease in the value of the land. Subsequently, I've talked to our city council, and he has reviewed the contract, and he is of the same opinion that I am and that Mr. Leonard are, that if there's no provision in the contract specifically setting out an agreed amount for the land, that the market approach should be used to determine the value of that land. So I think we're all on the same page on that. And that, by the way, would apply to the entirety of the Falls, I believe. The next large reduction was in the Ball Manufacturing Plant, which is no longer occupied, you know, it was vacated about a year and a half ago, I think. It went down in value over $2.6 million. And then the next one, Linden Square Shopping Center, as most of you know, Linden Square Shopping Center has an extensive number of vacancies, and I believe they used the income approach on that one as well, and that resulted in a reduction of almost half million dollars. Now, the good, the one piece of good news amidst all these bad things was the next one. As you all know, the Alpha Building sold for about $28 million, and it was, the assessment on that one was brought up to 26, a little over 26 billion, which was substantially more than the 17.5 million that it was assessed at in 2016. So that was an increase of $8,475,000. That's an example that is repeated many times over of properties in the city that were reduced at the appeal period. Some of these reductions were made by Wamperen's, and some of them were made by the Board of Equalization. None of those reductions were made by me. As a matter of fact, I'm supposed to be neutral in appeals and not take a position one way or the other when these boards are meeting. So it would be contrary really to law and ethics for me to even get involved in it. But the end result was, we got the final number, the final numbers from the Board of Equalization actually didn't come in until, I think, last Friday, and we worked them up yesterday, and I sent them to the city manager this morning, this was the first time she knew about this. And the reason why I didn't give advance notice is because, A, you have to remember, the Board of Equalization, which, by the way, they heard many more appeals, I mean, probably, just guessing, probably 60%, 70% more appeals than the Board of Assessors. They did not begin working on making their decisions on the appeals until after all the appeals were heard on April 12. And therefore, there was a delay from that point in them getting those values to us. Until they get those values to us, we don't have the information to give to the city manager to tell them, to tell the city manager what the total tax assessed value of the property in the city is, or how much tax to expect from that. And quite frankly, I was shocked at the extensive amount of reduction from the appeals. I mean, we've never had even close to this amount of reduction through the appeals process.
So if I can interject, if you don't mind, the effect on the draft budget is, we had, as I told you during the budget presentation, held the real property tax level, which was $12.1 million. The new total tax value that the commissioner gave me today was $11,665.66. Now, you have to take into consideration what the tax collection rate is, so I did talk to the treasurer, and I see she's in attendance, to confirm 94%. And so that would make the revised real property tax for the draft FY '18 budget $10,345,701.72. And so that's how we got the new budget shortfall of 1.75 million, is by comparing those two numbers. You know, the other issue here that I'm just going to go ahead and say is that, and I'm going to tell the treasurer to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think her bills have been sent to the printer. And the amount on those billings is around $13.5 million?
I think it is.
And so half of the 13.5. And so we have, you know, we have that issue as well.
So to be clear, you had a $4.1 million reduction, right, in revenues due to the tax reductions, right?
Compared to last...
Compared to last year.
We, that is correct. Now, some of that was flowed through revenue one time, but if you look at the overall, yes, 4.1.
So this is an additional 1.7 on top of the 4.1.
And you could also say, so you have had before you what I thought was a balanced budget based on the information at the time last week, and as of today, we now have a shortfall of 1.75 million.
Are we open the floor up? Is the floor open for us to ask questions at this point in time? Mr. Frye, there's one thing that really concerns me, and I'll share this with you. You know, there needs to be unity between even constitutional officers and the city.
I agree.
And I'm very concerned, I'm telling you, I'm concerned on two fronts. You've alerted me to something that really concerns me, and I'm going to pursue it through our council, who's not here, he's in a conference in Las Vegas, and he needs to be here tonight, okay, quite frankly, and I told him that today.
I know, I spoke to him today.
But realistically, you know, we, Ms. Bradlin, Ms. Crowder, who was sick last week, have spent an inordinate amount of time on a budget preparation, trying to get a balanced budget. And taxpayers of the city of Bristol have paid them to do that, as well as I'm sure other people in this city have helped and assisted with that, including the department heads, who are all, who are a lot here tonight, all the department heads, I appreciate you being here tonight, as well as it looks like all the constitutional officers in the city of Bristol, Virginia are here tonight, and I appreciate that. Some of these things, for instance, Ball Corporation, the city mall, and so forth, there'd be historical data from this Board of Equalization that, you know, you make a pretty good salary. And, you know, David Leonard has been on that Board of Equalization for years, Ms. Pruner's been on there for years, and I don't know who the other person is, you didn't say, but there would be historical data, I would think, that you could be able to look at and say, they've historically taken this down X percent.
That's not the way it works. They don't go by certain percentages, they look at, for the most part, if they're using a market approach, they're looking at comparable sales that occurred within the last four years. That could be, and that is different every four years.
But you could look at what they've typically done. You could look at typically what they've done, I mean, whatever reason it wasn't done, and the bottom line is, you know, with the mall being essentially shuttered, Ball Corporation, the equipment gone, those are issues that you knew as commissioner of revenue were shortfalls. And you, instead of waiting to today, or whenever, yesterday...
I knew that Ball likely would result in a reduction.
Can I basically ask you, sir, you've known this, and you knew we were preparing a budget, and wouldn't the practical and reasonable thing simply to be to contact our city manager and say, you know, rather than do this budget at this point in time, we're still waiting on this, and rather than this city council perusing this for over a week, our city employees, taxpayers, working through this, individuals coming last night and so forth, and spending their time and so forth, wouldn't it have been, you know, a fair and reasonable thing to simply said, you know, I don't think we're prepared to do a budget right now? Or is there a lack, I'm asking you, or is there a lack of communication between what Ms. Crowder had related to us about the real estate issues, and she didn't understand how to relate to us, or is it communication between you all? I mean, that's the question.
Ms. Crowder and city attorney were both aware that we were still going through the appeals process up until mid-April.
That's a handful, heaple. The final go-around was just some of these bigger chunks, but you had all the others taken care of.
And also...
Why couldn't we have gotten a head up?
Yes.
But hey, the things are...
Well, let me put that more bluntly. You came here at the end of December and said, 6% increase, average residential, 10% commercial.
And it showed up...
Because I looked up in the paper what Mr. McGee wrote, that's what you said.
Right, that's what I was told.
And so through this process, granted, I understand the Board of Equalization didn't finish until last week, there were some very big things there, but with the assessors, when they did their work in January and February, you could have seen, did you not see that this is not trending level, that it looks like there's going to be some decreases, or it may be leveled out, so that when the city staff was working on this, you could at least give them a heads up that maybe the number you're dealing with is not a good number to use?
The larger increases occurred during the Board of Equalization phase, that's definitely true. The majority of the cases that were heard that resulted in decreases in the Board of Assessors were more residential in nature, I'm not saying they all were, but I saw a lot of properties being reduced. But, I mean, you know, I didn't see anything at that point that was, you know, totally alarming. I mean, it looked like, you know, I did some calculations at one point, I think it was about halfway through, it looked like we were going to lose about 2% of the value of, you know, 2% of the four, but...
Was even not that conveyed to the city staff?
I can't recall whether I mentioned 2%. I think I mentioned there were a lot of cuts being made during the Board of Assessor hearings. But I don't think, the biggest part of the problem really came, the biggest cuts came after the Board of Equalization started doing their hearings, they did a lot more hearings than the Board of Assessors. Board of Assessors stood firm on a lot of them. But, I mean, there's no way, you know, the book itself is normally not prepared until you have all the values in it. I was just looking at individual pieces of property, I mean, I would occasionally see, and by the way, I will say, Wamperen's was extremely late in getting out their notices. And in some cases, I know of taxpayers that tell me that they never have gotten the notice from Wamperen's, and I have to look it up on my system and tell them what it was.
Listen, Mr. Frye, I'm a very patient person. And you know what, there is no excuse for what we're hearing. None. We asked for revenue projections from your office as early as last summer, and I've heard excuse after excuse of why we can't have revenue projections. And that question was a very basic question, and it's because you can't manage an organization like the city without solid revenue projections. And I even talked to the director of finance at the state, said, why can't I get revenue projections out of the commissioner of revenue of Bristol, Virginia? She said, you should be. Why aren't you? I said, I don't know, I get excuse after excuse. So now, you're standing before the city of Bristol, and everybody pays taxes, and we got two choices now. And I'll be very clear about this, we've got to cut $2 million out of the operational costs, which means people are going to lose their jobs. Or there's going to be a $2 million tax increase above and beyond what's already happened to make that go away. Those are the only two choices, because you have to have a balanced budget.
And you wait till tonight to come in.
And here we are on May 2, and we have three council meetings to do a first reading, second reading, and approval before July 1 by law. The best thing I can suggest to you is resign your position. The best thing I can suggest to you is resign your position. Resign your position because you have not served the citizens of this city like you should have.
But he goes to protest. He goes to go protest. But let me say something else, Mr. Frye. Let me interrupt Mr. Mumpire a minute. I wanna know back to what your little statement was, your little speech. You said that you were informed by city council that there were these contracts in place. It wasn't this city council. What city council are you talking to, talking about? I want you to say it on the record in the video. Who told you this, sir?
What, what are you, what are you talking about?
We can go back and play it back, and you can look, you said, I was informed by city council that there were agreements and contracts between the city and Cabela's and the city of Bristol and Lowe's. What city council, was that the morons that got us involved in this?
The planning department, but that, that was the prior council that.
Not this, no, not, not Mr. Hubbard and Mr. Hart.
No, I'm not talking about that.
You're talking about the other five that got us involved in Falls. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
The Democrats that you supported and your friends, correct?
I, I don't.
You said to me, they're all your buddies.
I wish you wouldn't make partisanship an issue here.
Oh, okay, well.
I personally was opposed to the Falls project.
Okay, well, this contract that was supposedly there that city council had told you, you're not specifying which councilman told you that. You don't specify if it's. Just let me, let me ask a question before you start running your mouth about something, okay? You, you, sir, you, sir, having specified it was Jim Steele, it was the mayor when the Falls was done, if it was Ed Harlow, Don Ashley, Ms. Brillhart, or Mr. Odom, can you specify a councilperson that told you that this five hundred thousand per acre property was in the contracts?
First of all, it was told me, to me by Andrew Trivitt.
Okay, well, that's not a councilperson. That's the man that now was economic development person that got us slugged into this stuff. But, so it wasn't city council, it was economic development. Now you're changing.
I, no, I said planning, if, if you.
No, you said city council member. We can go back and play it back.
I said planning.
No, well, there's a video. Now, let me ask you this.
But, but.
You said you've looked at the contracts, and this contract would have been formed by Pete Curcio. He was the city attorney at the time, correct, sir?
Correct.
So, Mr. Curcio supposedly would have had a five hundred thousand dollar contract per acre for Cabela's and Lowe's, is what you're saying here tonight in front of this council?
Pete Curcio told me that there was a provision in the Cabela's contract that would call for five hundred thousand an acre, that it was negotiated with Lowe's, that it be five hundred thousand an acre, but for whatever reason, it never ended up in the final contract.
So you're saying that Pete Curcio told you, the city attorney, that there was a negotiation for five hundred thousand dollars per acre with Cabela's?
Yes.
And you've looked at the contract, and that provision doesn't exist? Is that what you're saying?
I looked at the contract in the last two weeks, I believe. That's the first time I've seen it.
Have you seen the provision, sir? I'm asking you.
No, there is no provision.
There's no five hundred thousand dollars per acre provision, yet the city attorney told you, the Commissioner of Revenue, that that in fact is, was in the contract? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And that, we're gonna see. Okay, that's all.
Let me go, let me go back to, if I can recall what Mr. Mumpire said. The, this has been a very difficult year for all the reasons I mentioned. You know, we had a new assessor we'd never used before. We had a new administration system, and we had, I don't know why we had so many appeals. There, there seemed to be a great fear out there in the public that because we had a new contractor, that, you know, the values would go substantially up. And everything I had heard about that firm was exactly the opposite, that they were fair, they were reasonable. I had no reason to believe that they were, would assess it really high, and in fact, they didn't. They came out only four percent above what the last assessment by Blue Ridge was.
Has Washington County had any problems, Mr. Frye? Has Washington County, Virginia, who kept the same, same company for years and years and years? Have they had any problems that you know of, sir? Have they had any problems with this delays and so forth that you're speaking of here tonight?
Every, every commissioner that I know has had problems with their assessment company.
Well, again, my question.
And including Washington County, yes.
So they've had delays in their budget? They've had to go back in and say to their board of supervisors, sir, that we're one point seven five, four million dollars shortfall this late in the game in the budget cycle? Is that what you're saying?
I know David Henley has told me that he has, that their work has been way overdue on more than one occasion, causing him not to be able to have his book ready when he wanted to have his book ready.
Was that caused the board of supervisors to be delayed, or you're aware of that in their budget preparations? And with this kinda shortfall, this short and so forth, that you're aware of?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether that's true or not.
Well, you, you would agree that this is pretty significant to hear.
It is. It is.
So what percent did the total assessed value of all commercial and residential real estate drop under this appraisal?
Well, it, I, I mean, I, I just, I just came out, I just found the numbers myself yesterday. I haven't calculated it, but it, it would be, it looks like it would be somewhere around six percent.
How much?
Around, around six percent. The, the thing is, I mean, you, you make it sound like I was sitting on all this information, not sharing it with council or with the city manager. You know, like I said, these, you know, the first phase of it, which was the Board of Assessors, they assessed, I mean, they, they appealed, were involved in far fewer appeals in the Board of Equalization, but those were trickling in, you know, a few at a time. And, like I said, I've had a number of taxpayers come to my office and say they never got notification of, of what their actual decision was, and I had to actually contact the company, or eventually I got them to put it on my system. And, you know, I, I did see some, some decreases in value, but I didn't see anything that would, would be as alarming as a two million dollar cut. I mean, I was seeing much smaller reductions than that, and it wasn't, I didn't see these giant cuts. I mean, every one of those cuts, I think, that you saw there, I believe I'm right, every one of them occurred during the Board of Equalization phase, and those were some pretty, like that, you know, like that fifteen million dollar cut on the, on the mall, among others. So, because they didn't submit their final numbers to us last week, only when I started looking at those numbers, I got really concerned. And Monday, I realized there was gonna be a big problem, and I wanted to get the, I would've told her Monday, but I wanted to get her the final number, and when I got her the final number, as soon as I got it, I sent it to her. I sent it to Ms. Crowder, and it certainly wasn't her fault, but it's not like I was sitting on the information. These cuts were all the result of appeals, and you can't look at what a Board of Equalization or a Board, this is, this was a new assessment firm, I had no experience with them. You can't look at a Board of Equalization and what they've done in the past, and it was a new member of the board, by the way, Mr. Reedy, as I mentioned. And you can't look at what they did last time, four years ago, and say, well, they're gonna, they're gonna reduce everything by four percent, or, or two percent, or one percent. You know, it's all based on the market, and it's not just the market, it's the market for a particular type property in a particular location, a particular size, particular age, particular type construction.
Mr. Frye, where up here, I am, and trying to do a little bit of math on the, on these pads here, help us understand something. So, these are the taxes based on the current tax rates. Tell us what the, the change in the overall city's real estate value is, because what you presented in that slide, I add up to roughly twenty-seven million dollar decrease, and then an eight million dollar increase by alpha. So about twenty million dollars that the overall real estate value changed. I am having a hard time arriving at one point seven million based on that difference, so.
I wasn't saying that, that those properties.
No, but what I'm saying is, that's a portion of that overall decrease. Should you not have been aware that, that there was more, much more than that? And that's what I want, what you listed to us is a fraction of that. I guess my point is, you know, you explain reasons why through this process and stuff, and, and, you know, okay, we can understand that, but at what point should the city staff have known not to expect that, you know, this is gonna actually be a slight increase or even be leveled, but hey, I'm seeing that through this process, these things are starting to go down, because that has a huge impact, and, and I think to Councilman Plener's point, people have put in a lot of time and effort. Based on the number that they believed was correct. And, and you didn't have the final number until last week, and I understand that, but you should have at least seen, is that number look like it's stable? Is it trending down? I mean, that's what, where I'm having an issue with this, is why are we just now hearing about this? If, if it looked like it was trending down, why did the city staff not know that when they helped present this budget? Because, right, based on what they had, they balanced it. If they had known that it was trending down, they could've anticipated that to some degree to present a balanced budget based on those, that scenario. Now we gotta go back and make some, some really hard, some, some even harder choices than what we had to make.
The, the properties you saw on the slides, I think, those were all BOEs, which I found about, out about, I think, last week. Those were the, by far the largest cuts. Other than, other than those, I mean, those were by far the largest, the, the other cuts that I was seeing were, relative to those, were relatively marginal. And I could see that there was a, a decline, I mean, there was a lot of properties that were being reduced, but, I mean, they weren't being reduced by millions of dollars, they were being reduced by thousands of dollars. And, you know, I don't think, at, at no time did Wamperine's ever give me anything showing the, the results of, of, of what their appeals were. I mean, they, they incorporated it into the system, and, you know, I've tried to keep up with them, but, and I did, I, I saw some declining values, but nothing beyond what I've seen in the past.
When did you start seeing? I think that's the question, sir.
I saw, I saw declining values immediately, but they, they weren't alarming.
What's immediately mean to you, sir? What, this is May second.
The first, the first group of appeals that I, that I looked, looked up, when I found that.
So when is that? When is that?
I have to.
I mean.
I don't, I don't think they got.
Was it this year?
I don't think they got the first appeals on the system until sometime in early to mid-March.
So mid-March, you started seeing this, appeals and so forth, and?
Mostly with residential properties.
Ms. Crowder and Ms. Bradlin, who's been here and done a good job within the last month, and, you know, they are paid by taxpayers. And you didn't say, we're starting to see this decline and so forth and so on, in March, before they spent all this time? Do you realize how much time, Mr. Frye, that it takes to do this? Do you have any clue?
And I, and I, one of the people that I did talk to at the time was, was, was Kim Warfield, and I told her that I was seeing properties reduced in value, and there were quite a few that were being reduced.
You need to tell one person when you see that. You need to tell them immediately, and it's that one sitting right there in that city manager chair. Right? That's the person you have to tell when this happens.
How many times have you talked to her in a year?
I mean, I, I talked to her three or four times, I, I don't know.
It's more than three or four times a year, because.
No, 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 I was gonna say, three or four times a month at least, in, in, during budget phase, probably once a week or more.
You have anything at all to say about, I mean, so far I've heard, basically, the new appraisal company is the problem.
I'm trying to get to it.
Well, that's right, that's right, that's right, that's right.
I'm just looking at the numbers. We have over a billion dollars in total fair market value. In order to get in the hole two million dollars, we had to lose a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars in property value. And you pointed out that there was twenty-seven million in doubt up till the other day. Why didn't you notice a hundred million dollar dip?
Hundred and forty, hundred and forty.
Well, yeah. I mean, I, I can say that you lose, you would see some dip and not worry about it, but that seems to me like if it's not on a spreadsheet or the computer, it wouldn't give you a total of what is, how we looking here today? I don't understand why that much money would be missed.
Well, it's this new appraisal firm, Mr. Hubbard, see, everybody's blame, except picking up the telephone, making a call, or walking up here from City Hall and talking to Ms. Crowder in person. How long did that take you? Five minutes? You make eighty-one thousand dollars a year?
Well, I mean, I, I come up.
I'm asking you, you make eighty-one thousand dollars a year, and you can't talk to her for five minutes and tell her the possibility is going to have a shortfall?
By the way, but, but that's beside the point.
Well, whatever the point is, you, you make pretty good money, and you don't, you can't spend five minutes to call her and tell her that we may be shortfall this much?
I had no idea how much we're gonna be shortfall.
I tell you what, you're lucky I'm not the city manager, 'cause I would've locked your door, you gave me a number. I would've personally put you in a car and drove you to Richmond if I didn't get my answer, and forced it out of you and the Director of Finance at the state level. And then if I didn't get my answer, I'd had Carico and Quinn in there and said, we gotta have a number, and I ain't leaving till I get it. This is absolutely irresponsible from a revenue office.
No, okay, okay.
This is irresponsible. You know, you, there's nothing else to talk about on this except the way forward, right? That's all we need to talk about. And I wanna know what legal options we have to, one, reassess the entire city's value property. City attorney either needs to get on the phone right now, we need to go into recess and wait for him to call in.
Yes.
And tell us what all of our legal options are. We'll, we'll call for another entire appraisal if we have to.
I think yes.
This is unbelievable.
It is unbelievable. And it puts us, it puts us in a spot, sir, that you have no clue. You don't care.
Oh, I do care.
Oh, yeah.
I certainly do care, and.
This is a prime example of people not watching what's going on. Not only are we looking at this kinda shortfall, it's equated to ten point, between the four point one and this one, it's ten point six percent across the board.
Ten percent revenue drop, exactly.
Yes. Okay, here is an issue that we are really gonna have to be concerned about, because we have lost a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars in assets, and we owe fifty-eight million dollars in bonds that we borrowed based on our assets, and we have to go back and refinance them, and now we've taken this kinda hit on assets, we are probably not loan worthy right now, and if we go to refinance, we are gonna pay an unbelievable interest rate. Well, if, if we look at the bond, well, he made a motion that we go into executive session, it's not on, fucking on the agenda right now, and contact our attorney. I, I'm seconding that motion. I assume Mr. Mumpire does a motion?
Yep.
I will second the motion if we go into executive session.
That's, that's to put it on the agenda.
No, I wanna go to executive session.
Well, I know, since it's not on the agenda, you have to all agree to put it on the agenda.
I, I move that we do that with Mr. Mumpire. I second that. Roll call.
Under which, because under executive session, you have to go for certain things.
We're gonna talk about the finances of the city. I think that's, was that not?
Well, we gotta. We would have to, we would, we would have to, to have a.
We just have to recess.
Yeah.
Recess meeting. We don't, we can't, there's nothing we can do.
There's nothing to do tonight.
No.
Except go home.
Yep, that's all. That's true. If we can't straighten this out, this will be the death blow. It will, it will. Thanks. 'Cause we haven't even talked about getting ready for the refinancing on the bonds.
So why can't we go into executive session to talk about the legal aspects of the discussion of the FY18 budget?
We gotta have all the Virginia code numbers and all that stuff.
We get, we get our attorney on the phone to get some of the.
We, if, if you will recess for five minutes, we will pull the FOIA code, the clerk and I, and we will look and see if there's a reason we can go into executive session.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Well, we will take a five-minute recess. Have everyone take your seat. We'll go ahead and reconvene the meeting and follow in that recess, and after looking at the code and some other discussions, we'll wait until, have consultation with the attorney between now and, and Thursday about some of these issues. And so, I guess the other thing, since we, we do have to. And so, I guess the other thing, since we, we do have to go back and do a lot of sharpening our pencils and some recalibration, I do appreciate all the constitutional officers that, that came tonight at the request of council, and to be respectful of your time, I would say, you know, if council has any questions of them, to please ask them now, and so that, you know, they, so they won't have to come back in the future. And I don't know, I don't have any specific questions, I don't know if any of y'all do, of any of the constitutional officers.
Sheriff Wissenberger, is it possible, given the events of this evening, that we can start housing the prisoners free?
I don't know about that, Mr. Plener, but I just want to say, I appreciate the effort that you all are going through, I've told the city manager that in the past, I'll come back anytime I need to come back, don't.
I appreciate you being respectful of my time, but I think this is serious enough that if you want me back at a later date, I'll be back. Thank you.
You already said you were going to take all the blame, didn't you? Since you're retiring.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else?
I don't have any questions.
It does mean to all the constitutional officers and department heads, if this holds true, you better be looking now at your department budgets much, much closer than you thought you had to. And so, I'll just leave this with you, when this happens to most organizations, there's some pretty, across the board things that happen, hiring freeze, no travel, no overtime, no capital spending, tho, those are the easy ones, and that's just, you just line it out, and then when we get our number, we'll see if we can add it back in, because you better look at every line item now and say, is it a must-have? In other words, I got to have it to keep operating, or is it a like-to-have? And if it's a like-to-have, you better put a red line through it, because that's what we're going to do, if that number holds. So we're going to have to do, unfortunately.
Any, any other comments?
I'm sure as we get deeper in this, we're going to have questions, maybe we can just call or request, you know, the constitutionals to come in as we discover, we have some questions for them.
Yeah.
I mean, for them to come every night, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think unless we have a specific question, we can notify them in advance, but.
We can just relay to city manager, we have questions, and she can contact, protect our office.
I got a feeling that, that we definitely won't finish Thursday, and we'll have to have some meetings next week and beyond, so, again, as we get into this, we may have many more questions, but I do appreciate that, the, the effort of all the constitutionals and department heads to come this evening, and so I, I guess unless there's anything else that we, we can go ahead and adjourn, and we'll meet again Thursday morning at 8:00 AM, bright and early.
Is it?
Okay, good, okay. Just, just a note, if this holds, and we can't reassess because of time, we're looking at 10.6% just to get back to zero and get it balanced. So that means that the department heads have some serious, serious work to do, because this council shouldn't be held to every percent of that. The, the manager, the department heads need to step up, that's part of being a leader, is to make the tough calls and tough decisions when they need to be made, and right now, they need to be made.
Would just add, if you're so inclined, pray for us.
Amen, please pray for this city.
And Thursday's a great time to do it, they have a day of prayer in the park, so.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
All right, well, nothing else, we'll call the meeting adjourned.